Hi, everyone. Today is Tuesday, July 13th, 2021. The time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Coppel City Council. There is a quorum present, so I will call the meeting to order. First order of business is to convene into a work session in the first-floor conference room. The public is invited to attend. Thank you. The time is 5:31, and we're convening into work session. Item A is... Oh, let's just wait till everybody gets back. Welcome, everybody. Item number A is a discussion of agenda items. Is there any item that needs to be discussed? Don, did you get your questions answered?
I did.
All right. All right, moving on. Discussion...
Are we talking about the consent item at this moment as well?
That is an agenda item. Yes, it is.
Okay. May I ask a couple of questions or just a clarification?
Certainly.
Is, uh, Miss...
Early here?
Yeah. Would you kind of explain about the Civic Center Agreement and then what it actually means and how it actually benefits the residents specifically?
(inaudible). Oh, sorry. Can't speak through there, so I'll send this one. I'm not a good speaker.
Why you don't bring her up?
Well, they just knew there was no way else to do that section out there, so... So, I'm sorry. Do you mind? You asked about the Civic Center Agreement?
Yes, I know we talked about this during last time, but as far as for the resident that might be watching or listening, can you just kind of explain as to what that agreement is and how, what it entails and how that actually benefits the residents with the agreement?
Sure. So, the Civic Center Agreement is basically a lease between the city and the hotel with the meet, so that we can access the meeting space. Each Civic Center Agreement establishes a different number of times. The majority of them are allowing us to utilize that space for at least four times a year. So, we could, we can use that for whatever want. So, if there is, if there's ever an event that the city wanted to hold on behalf of citizens or anything along those lines, we can rent that space. So, for example, we've used it for job fairs in the past, so we were able to utilize that space through this lease agreement to host job fairs with the businesses in the community, and then the residents can come apply for jobs there.
So, you talked about having, I guess, four times in a year to use that Civic Center if we need to.
Correct.
If we don't use that, are the citizens, I guess, does the citizens have an option to maybe go through the city to use that?
That's not how it's established today, so that is not how it would be the city that would be leasing the space or using the space, preserving the space. We've never established criteria on when we would allow this, you know, the citizens to come request to use that space. So, I mean, that's something I guess in the future we could consider, but that is not how it's set up today. That is, we did not establish criteria for that.
Okay.
This one, put up there, please. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else?
No.
All right. Moving on. Discussion regarding council committee assignments. So, absolutely. So, fortunately, or unfortunately, fortunately, everybody got, almost everybody got their number-one choice. The, the way it worked out was there were a couple of items that were very important, and one council member, Councilmember Carol was copy, or selected the same thing that Councilmember John and Neville's did, so, Don, you got your second choice. Everybody else got their first choice. This was based on, A, your choices, and then, B, the second criteria was seniority. Anybody have any questions? All right.
Can you tell us what this, these months that are on the left-hand side, what it means?
That's, that's the, that's the months when you're going to be requested to report on the organization. We typically do that quarterly. You'll get a, you'll get an advance, well, you'll get a bit of an advance warning, but usually about a week, week's worth. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't remember. Who got the senior center? Okay. Just a, that's the only one that, that has worked better in the past, just the way that the seniors have enjoyed it, and I'm not, you can do it however you want. In addition, usually our, our council member that was responsible for that would invite another council member to participate on a rotating basis, so that the seniors got to see the entire council over the course of the year. You're free to do whatever you want.
And it's during the lunch.
And that is a, it's a brown bag luncheon that they have once a month, so. That you can get with the Lacy over there, and she can work you out. Bijou?
Yeah, so, thank you. There are nine assignments here. We had more than nine projects listed or items listed, so what happened to those?
Well, there was one of them that was not supposed to be on the list.
Okay. What was that?
It was the Metro Crest Hospital Authority.
Okay.
And that was, I used to be the liaison for that, and it didn't even dawn on me that we were no longer supporting that organization when I saw it, so I apologize for that. I just took it off, and if you choose, I just bumped everyone's number up one if you chose it.
And the Regional Mobility Coalition?
Yeah, that is a group, that is a fairly, fairly, I don't want to call it influential, but they have a lot to say with the regional mobility of the area. They're deeply tied into COG. It's composed of city councilmen and mayors from across the North Texas area. It's a, they have a, there's a lot of business that goes on there for the region. It's a, it's a, I've sat in on a couple of the meetings, and it was fast-paced, and they covered a lot of ground in a very short period of time. Yeah, I'd never heard of it before. I mean, it's, it is a committee that functions, and they are, they are very, very fast-paced, very forward-looking as well.
I was just wondering, because it's not assigned, so...
Yes, it is.
It is?
Your name's not on there, but you're doing it.
What?
Your name is not on there, but you said you were doing it.
Oh, Don should be.
No, there's RTC.
Oh.
Huh?
Dallas Regional Mobility?
That's Dallas Regional Mobility.
Yeah. Who do you want to...
There's nobody on it.
You said you were doing that.
Oh!
The RMC. It's okay.
So, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but these are the one minutes.
What's that? That's what you... Okay. Sorry, I did not proofread. So, wait.
You can just read yours tonight, and that's fine.
Yeah, okay. Little, little, I'm sorry, little change.
That's what you...
Little change. Sorry about that.
Pass it back to me.
Pass that one out.
You'll pass me back the other one, so you don't get confused. Thank you.
Is that misinformation? Is that what that is?
That's fake news. Yeah, that's fake news.
Misinformation, bad news.
I got three of them. Four. Did I get two?
I can just take a picture of them.
No, I got lots.
Now, I understand why everybody was looking at me confused.
That's why I was confused, because, yeah. Okay. Yes, that's right.
This was what I intended, I'm sorry.
Yes, a little...
So, the, the change there was, we were, I was really struggling, in all fairness, I was thinking about putting my name under the Dallas Regional Mobility Coalition. When I did that, it created a huge mess, because there was no place to really give Don one of his high choices. So, that would have bumped him down into like his sixth or seventh choice, I don't remember. And after talking to Mike, it was probably, yeah, the mayor's never really done that before, so I backed out, and it worked out much cleaner this way. And thanks to Mark, Brianna, and Cliff for picking up two of them. That was a seniority. Okay. Anybody have any questions? I'm sorry, no wonder you guys were looking at me crazy. So, Kevin and John and Don all picked the Coppel Independent School District, and can't remember, there was two of them, basically you three guys had asked for all the same thing. And so, when, then Don had his number-two choice, was one that the other two of you hadn't picked, so that when that happened, it worked out okay. I know that this sounds trivial, but this was hard. All right. Anybody have any other questions? All right. Item C is discussion mayor pro temp appointment. Don't really have a presentation for this. By tradition, we have always selected, I don't even know how to describe it, the most senior person that hasn't served recently. Just coming off the mayor pro temp, Cliff and Mark have both served in the past, well, two years.
Yeah, you mean, I don't get to be mayor pro temp forever?
You've done more meetings than anyone else.
No. You vote for Mark?
Service what?
He did service well.
Some cities do, but the mayor specifically picked the mayor pro temp, and in Plano, Mayor LaRazzaier had picked the same mayor pro temp his entire term. We don't do it that way, so we do it sort of by seniority. Quite honestly, the next person up on the list is Brianna. She has served in as mayor pro temp, but many years ago?
Probably about 10 years.
Yeah. So, by, so by any stretch of the choice or of the, of the list, she'd be next up. After that, the next person in line would be Bijou, followed by John, Kevin, and then gone by 34 days.
But who's counting?
Yeah, it's all day, maybe.
In other words, you're last. Kevin, if you ever end up running out of something to say about that, call Gary Roden.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the selection of the mayor pro temp? Will come up, it's an item on the agenda. When it comes up, I'll ask for a nomination. And please, Brianna, if you could nominate yourself, but probably better not to.
You want the job?
We can nominate.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I want to make sure you want the job.
Yeah.
Okay, good, perfect.
I'll take it, yes. Well...
All right. Moving on. Item D, discussion, discussion regarding the fire department's automatic assistance agreement with the city of Irving. Chief Richardson.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. So, yeah, in my, in the fire world, we usually select people by the opposite, so the new guys get selected first, and then, or actually, what happens first is whoever's not there gets voted in.
You've been voluntold.
Yeah, it's comforting to know that we're actually doing it the right way, so. Yeah, so this agenda item tonight is, I want to kind of, it's actually a consent agenda item. I kind of want to just spend some time and explain some stuff to you on some automatic aid activities going on in the region and what it means to Coppel. And I actually have an automatic aid agreement between the city of Irving that'll be presented as part of the consent agenda. So, I'm going to kind of, you know, on any given day, when you watch the news, you're going to see something. Typically, fire rescue and emergency medical services are bread and butter, but there's a whole slew of other things, and it's all hazards response model that goes with the fire departments. Everything from hazardous materials to dive teams, swift water rescue, technical rescue, which is above ground, below ground, high angle, structural collapse. You have aircraft rescue, firefighting, boxing to the airport. You see all this stuff on the news about wildland firefighting, bombs, explosives, and mass casualty incidents or incidents that involve a lot of people, which is railway, transportation, social unrest, things of that nature. So, we see that on the news all the time. When somebody calls 911, they're expecting somebody to come, and so they're kind of out of options. And so, our responsibility is to make sure that we have access to all of these opportunities, because it's not financially feasible for every city to sustain, develop, maintain, financially support a tier-one level team for all of these disciplines. And so, we do that in a number of ways, and we do that through automatic aid agreements. And I'll explain a couple of things. There's, there are several different types of aid. So, the first one would be federal aid. An example of federal aid would be federal disasters that you see, Hurricane I, Katrina. These are some of our firefighters here that were deployed to those two incidents. Basically, what that means is the federal government has issued a disaster declaration. We have aids in place that say, if you have credentialed folks, we would be happy to utilize their services, and we will pay you for that. And so, there's a reimbursement process that we go through. It's basically, they are paying for our guys, our firefighters, to go on deployments. The next level would be the state. The state has a similar program, some of those that would you would see, again, we had flooding issues that occurred in the state of Texas. The most common one is in wildfire season. You see on the news, all these small towns that have wildfires in the state of Texas, we have an intrastate mutual aid system that basically says the same thing from the state. If you have credentialed folks, we will be happy to reimburse you, send you that way, deploy you for your services. We do that by sending off duty folks. Then you have the local, which is closer to home, so I'm kind of working my way in. We have this thing called mutual aid, and mutual aid says, usually that's by county. So, if there's an incident at a county and a department has exceeded their resources, you could reach out to the mutual aid area, and if they're available or they have the resources, then they would respond. There's no exchange of fees, it's kind of neighbor's helping neighbor's kind of, kind of a situation. And then you have something that's even closer to home, which is automatic aid. And we have aid agreements with all of these already, by the way. We have aid agreements in all of the counties that surround us, state and as, as well as the federal agreement. This automatic aid thing is a little bit closer to home, and usually is reserved for folks who border your city limits. And it basically says, hey, look, we have some stuff, you have some stuff, we'll share some resources, and it'll be more of an automatic aid basis. So, instead of calling the county and wasting time, and you calling them, and we deciding if we want to come play, it's all predetermined. It's a predetermined response is what it is. There's no delay, there's no questions involved, you simply are just part of your initial response system. We have automatic aid agreements with just about everybody around us. And basically, what it says is that, hey, look, if we exceed our resources past the first call for services, we're going to call on you to come help us. In exchange, we would do the same. And so, we do that quite a bit. And in my experience, I'll tell you that we are way ahead on the receiving end of receiving aid than we are on giving aid. In this case, this is the...
You have to go over here. It wasn't working on that screen.
Okay, good, okay. So, if you look at this, this is the city of Coppel right here. Or can I use your mouse?
Yeah.
So, this obviously is the city of Coppel right here. And all these surrounding cities, we have an automatic aid agreements with right now. We have agreements with everybody except the city of Irving, which is down here. We just never have. Irving has previously had a philosophy that they would handle their own stuff. And what initiated some of this discussion is that the city of Irving has a housing development within our city limits. My mouse is kind of touchy, but right in here, right in this area. There's a small housing development that's went in in that area, has about 125, 135 homes in it. The station that Irving responds to is this one right here in Valley Ranch, and what they do is they have to come up through our city of Coppel to get there. So, as that development was going on, very good friends with the city of Irving Fire Chief, we served on the county board together, and went through a number of credentialing things together, and, you know, there was an opportunity for us to share some resources on an automatic aid basis, and so. So, typically, what happens on automatic aid is beyond the first call for service. So, if Irving would get the first call, they would make the call. If that fire station was busy, next dude would be us before they would call a farther-away Irving fire station. So, we do that right now on all the borders of Coppel. We would handle the first due call in our city. A Coppel unit would respond. If it was, if we needed more help and we didn't have that, we would automatically call the resources around us to come help us. Now, what that does for us also is when you have these aid agreements, for instance, if all of our, if we have an incident at a warehouse, it takes pretty much all four of our fire stations on the first alarm. Anything beyond that, we have to have aid to help us. And so, those aid agreements help those other responding units to come, and there's no delay. It's all prescripted out. If you go mutual aid, you have to call the county, and they got to decide and call around, and it's just a huge delay. And so, these automatic aid agreements for surrounding cities are a huge benefit for us. Yes?
What's the standard of service for Irving to that housing development that you were talking about?
The standard?
Well, I'm sorry, the time.
Response time.
How to respond?
I'm not, I'm not really sure what their, you know, I think they would have something to do with it. It's actually done by drive miles, so you can tell our fire station's actually closer than theirs is. I haven't, I don't know exactly what that exact time to that location would be.
Another question. You talked about the, well, it's basically the certification when you're, you're credentialed.
ISO and Texas Fire Chiefs.
Well, no. For specific. For specialties.
Okay.
Technical rescue. Yeah. So, how, under automatic aid, how does a requesting authority know that you've got credentialed firefighters to come assist you?
I've already signed the agreements with them, and so, as part of signing their agreements, like do, like do the federal and the state? Yeah. So, part of their agreements are that, hey, you, you have to have these minimum requirements to respond to these kinds of incidents. And so, if our folks are not credentialed, then the certain incident management and tactics or strategies and whatever levels of service that there are.
For example, confined space, we responded to Irving when they've had the Kedan.
Yeah, and I'll talk about that here in a minute, so, yeah.
So, they call us.
But you're talking about state, right? The larger...
No, I was talking about local.
Okay, yeah. So, we, we, it's all, it's all predetermined, and that's the problem with mutual aid, is it's not predetermined. And so, automatic aid means that it's been thought out.
Pre, pre...
It's been predetermined. It's a predetermined assignment. Our dispatchers know exactly who to call, and that's how that works. And all those other disciplines. Now, those disciplines that I mentioned earlier, you know, it's, you know, we are definitely have options of, to determine those, those specialty teams in the area, because it's not feasible for Coppel, Texas to financially manage and maintain a tier-one hazardous materials team. We just don't do it. But we are trained to a certain level, but we rely on a tier-one team to arrive. And right now, let's do the city of Dallas, do the mutual aid agreement, and that's if their team is available, and there's a delay in response time to get there. And so, we have to have alternatives and opportunities for us to secure these aid agreements. You know, we run quite a bit with Irving on the freeway 635. You can see how it runs, and so, you know, as it stands right now, you know, our dispatchers do the best they can to determine whose call it is, who's not. Sometimes it's great, and they just send both call, they just send both units, you know. We get there, but it's not uncommon to get there, and they go, hey, that's us, and Irving will just, there you go, it's, you got it, we're not, see you, when we could need their help. But because we don't have that agreement in place, it makes it more difficult. Until technically, for mutual aid, we have to be completely out of resources, and then call the county, and then see if somebody else can come help us. And so, there's been a lot of incidents where, on any of our other borders, when we run out 121 Great Line, we both show up, we both go to work, which helps out, because sometimes we run out of water, if it's an 18-millimeter fire, things of that nature, we can help support each other. It really helps streamline the process, and it puts our firefighters in a great place, because they don't have to, to wonder where their help is coming if our resources are exceeded. So, that's what kind of initiated, was that housing development up there, there was some opportunity there. And of course, if you notice, our city of Irving has three fire stations that border our city limits pretty close. As it stands today, since I've been here in my entire career, I've never had a city of Irving fire station do any work in the city of Coppel, ever, because these agreements don't exist, which is kind of sad, actually. I mean, it's just, there were some philosophical differences, and now I think they realize that regionalizing is where it's at, and then we have to start sharing resources to be successful. That's what the model that's helped everybody else. Everybody else has these agreements all the way around it. And so, so let me kind of go on, you know, what's in it for us? So, let me kind of, because I know that's always the question, what's in it for us? Which it is, I mean, we, I've seen some agreements that are a little lopsided, and most of the lopsided agreements are for cities who were the opposite, where they didn't want to finance a certain thing, so they let somebody... And most of the lopsided agreements are for cities who were the opposite, where they didn't want to finance a certain thing, so they let somebody else run it for them. This is not the case. Irving has more fire stations or in the city than we have or in theirs. They have the resources there. This just allows for opportunity if things, if there is a need for us to cross those boundaries and help each other. So that, that would definitely not be the case in this situation. So what, what's, what's benefits for us in Cockell Fire Department? Well, Irving has a, because there's guidelines in there talk about we have to train together now that we're working together. This is their training facility, it's brand new. It's been a lot of millions of dollars to put this thing together, and we would have opportunity to use that training facility as well. You know, we have our own training facility right now, but we're 25% owners, so we only get to use it 25% of the time. So this would definitely open up the opportunity for us to do some regional training with these guys. The other thing they have is what they call this traffic management system. Traffic management, incident management, unfortunately, firefighters are getting killed on the roadway. And their expensive fire trucks are getting smashed by either drunk drivers or, or whatever, slick roads or whatever. And so the city of Irving has put into play this thing called a TENS, it's traffic incident management, where they take surplus fire trucks and strip them down and turn them into traffic management with lights and this and that and warning devices and cones. And its only purpose is to block for the first responders their own roadway. Last year, their unit got hit twice on 635, protecting the incidents and firefighters. So one of them got hit from the rear and the other one got hit from the side. And they all hurt at night, after midnight, so I'm sure there was some intoxication or some kind of, you know, drunk driving incidents that were occurred. And so it did its job, protected the firefighters and protected their equipment from getting smashed. And so this, this, the one on top right now is the one that's in service located at Station 10, which is right across highway 635. And what this agreement would probably do is allow, any calls on 635 would allow for those guys to get the calls, will to come block for us. That would provide safety for our firefighters, which we don't have right now. We used to try to call the DART or the TechDoc, but they're so done, I mean, by the time you get there, the incident would basically be over. So this would be a huge safety factor for us to be able to utilize them with this. The next thing they have, you know, as Mike was talking about, there's some technical rescue issues. Our commitment to the region, and we have accepted grant money probably close to 20 years ago, is to develop a technical rescue team that's been supported by FEMA and deployed by FEMA. It's because we accepted grant money and apparatus to do it as well as training. But to the region, what these guys do, part of the cog, is we provide technical rescue for trench confined space, high angle, and structural collapse. Part of this technical rescue response requires, you know, like anything, you want to have a backup team available because there's just nobody to come get you if you're in trouble. And so over the last several years, Irving, because they were standalone, they wanted to do everything themselves, they, we inadvertently had to work together on a couple of technical rescue incidents. And we did this without this agreement in place. You know, we both got the call, our guys got there, and they thought, you know what, we're not turning around, this is a serious deal. And we're going to stay here to either provide some assistance and we'll let the chiefs work it out later, type deal. The one on the left is a bus incident, it was full of people, it was a mass casualty incident. Took a lot of resources to do that one. The one on the top is a trench, is a body recovery where a trench worker got collapsed on, where our guys were a technical advisor to the Irving team and provided backup to their entry guys. The one on the right was, I believe, at Cockell, what this was, was a plumber who's dug underneath the slab and slab collapsed on him, and actually rescued that guy. So the, the ability of equipment and sharing of resources, they have some stuff we don't have, we have some stuff they don't have. It's always good to have a strong incident team as well as a backup team. So that would definitely clean this up a lot to where our people don't have to, to worry about what the agreements are. If we need help, we can call them, we can rely on. The next thing we have is Irving staff sees two big fire trucks, they're tiller, tractor, trailer driven. What they do is they reach a lot of height. We don't have this kind of apparatus in Cockell. We have aerial devices, but we don't have these. And if I needed one, I could technically, with the agreement, call on him and they would bring it. And we'd have them prescripted. The next thing is, probably the biggest one, is this hazardous materials response, which Irving has. They have a tier-one team. Our, our, our primary response right now is through the county, which is the city of Dallas, which is located downtown. And they're busy. They make a lot of, I mean, everything from ruptured diesel tanks and pumps to, you know, major hazardous materials incidents. And so they're always busy. Having access to having the Irving guys moved up as our primary guy would be, as our primary team would be a huge improvement to any hazardous stuff. And part of our assessments last, last couple of years ago, is we did some hazard assessments where we went and actually sat on the roadways and sat at the rail stations and looked at placards and counted, and you would be surprised at what passes through our city. The average person has no idea. But to have this resource would be a big one for us. The next one is, we do have waterway in our area, but we don't have this equipment, we don't staff it. We, you know, the dive teams are located in, you know, Louisville has a tier-one dive team because they have a lake, and so does Grapevine because they have a lake. And believe it or not, I've had to call on them before to do body recoveries in some of our waterways. And I've had to call on some of these, and some of them to try to do water rescues during flood season. So having access to this type of thing, or having another opportunity to access these technical teams would be, again, a big, a big improvement for us. Again, this is all in the best interest of public safety. You know, there's actual mutual benefits on both sides of the equation. As I mentioned, it provides automatic specialty response teams without hesitation. It's an immediate response. You know, and, and for us, Cockell, Texas, for the cities that border us, we are the smallest ones. And so this one where it says we, immediate response when our resources have exceeded their capacity, we're going to exceed our capacity before anybody else, because we only have four fire stations. Everybody has five, everybody else has more than us. So we're going to exceed our stuff before they do. Irving has 12. So the chances of them exceeding their capacity before they call us, unless it's a predetermined, is going to be, because they'll have other units to call on. You know, when all of our, when all of our fire stations are empty, either responding to multiple calls at the same time or one big incident, this automatic aid allows for automatic contacts where, for surrounding agencies to come backfill our fire stations. So that if a call comes in when we're empty, we can still make the call. Versus if they have mutual aid, mutual aid says, hey, you, we're not going to come fill in, or we're not going to backfill. Call us if an incident comes, and then we'll make the call, make the call. And so there's a huge delay in making those calls. Again, it avoids duplication of all these specialty response equipment. As I mentioned, you can't, it's just not financially feasible for every city to be a tier-one in everything unless you're a big metro city or a big metro department. So you have to take, take specialty areas and kind of share the resources. The big thing is, when you get on these big technical incidents, it's always good to have command staff people there who are qualified incident commanders to help you work through those large-scale incidents. If you've been watching the news, if you see the stuff that's been going on in Florida with the collapse over there, there's teams from Israel that have been responding to that. So, you know, you can't have enough response opportunities that are available. Obviously, it improves our staffing levels, and this is in compliance with our industry standards. Our industry standards say, you've got to have a certain amount of people, a certain amount of equipment, you've got to be there a certain amount of time. And what this does is it helps us meet those standards quicker. The thing with the city of Irving, also, you know, I mentioned earlier, that they, they haven't been big into any kind of aid agreements in the past other than the county. And part of that is because I think they felt like nobody had the same level of standard that they had. But we meet all of the same credential standards as city of Irving. They're a Class 1 ISO, so are we. They're accredited by the fire chiefs and best practices, and so are we. And I think that's one of the reasons why they're okay with this agreement. Because they haven't done with anybody else yet. I mean, this is uncharted for them. And so in moving forward, you know, if, again, I recommend, this is, I highly recommend that we, we look at doing this. It would be easy to implement, we already have compatible communications, we've already looked at those standardized. Some of our operating guidelines and our procedures, there's training opportunities between the two cities. This is one then, that there's no exchange of funding. It's, you, basically, the way the agreements are on automatic aid is you treat your employees as if they're responding to your own city. So if they get injured or have an accident or something happens, you treat it as if you're in your own city, even though they're working in somebody else's city. And that would go the same for them if they came over here. If it involves EMS and ambulance transport, then the way it's set up is that we would handle the same billing process as we would for any non-citizen. So we would get the benefit from that. And yes, I, I think there would be a positive impact on the public services is that we would have access to all of the stuff I mentioned, which we have access to now, but it's in a much longer, much farther away opportunity. There's more of a delay given. If for some reason we're not happy with their services, whatever that may be, there's an opportunity for us to have termination clause within 90 days, no questions asked. They don't have to grieve to it, we just say we want out, we just get out. And without, I'll take any questions.
Questions?
Yes.
John?
The termination clause, does that work for Irving as well?
Yes.
They can just terminate whenever they...
It's the same exact agreement. That is, I mean, the, the agreement has both signatures from both cities. So yes, that's the same thing. If they're unhappy with us or for whatever reason, they have a 90-day termination clause, they can terminate at any time, no questions asked.
So I know you said that you had, you know, done a lot of the certifications and stuff with the chief, you know, been through a lot of those processes down there. So obviously, you guys have built a relationship. If it wasn't for that one neighborhood that they're looking for aid from, from Cockell, do you think that, that the agreement would have taken place without the need for us servicing that neighborhood?
So I'll make sure I understand the question again. So if it wasn't for the neighborhood, would I be here tonight? Yeah, yeah. I, I think I would. I, I think that was just kind of straw that, that kind of said, hey, man, we just, why are we wasting, I mean, we need to do this. I, I, there were some, been some leadership changes and some philosophical differences over the years that I've been, you know, I've seen come and go. And as I mentioned earlier, I think Irving's, at the time, was, hey, we're Irving, Texas, and we don't need anybody's help. And if we do, we'll hire our own people and handle our own stuff, we're not going to rely on anybody. And I, I think that with what's going on and with revenue and this and that, whatever, the rest of the world has moved on, you know, to, to sharing of resources for years, and they just haven't. And, and now I think they're ready to kind of walk out.
Thank you.
But there's a lot of changes on both sides.
Perfect, thank you. Brianna?
I'll just say that, Chief, thank you for this. You know, I, I think it makes sense. We always talk about public safety being our top priority. And, you know, just for those that didn't go through Cypress Waters, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I know there was some tension with Irving as well, there was a lot going on. So again, there's been a lot that's happened. And so it's good to hear that there's been a shift in...
Yes.
...culture. And if anything, whatever we can do to, to work with other cities...
Sure.
...and where it's reciprocated, I would think that's beneficial for everybody.
I would agree. Tom?
I'd agree. I think it's a great, it's a great thing for us to get involved with. One question, you said there's no exchange of funds, correct? I mean, we act as if it's our own city.
That's correct.
What if by chance you get to the end of two or three years and they've, they've supported us 50 times and we've only supported them two times, or vice versa?
Yeah, right, right.
I mean, does, does that come into play? Does that come into, like, do we evaluate, is that, would we decide we need to come up with a different agreement? Or how, how might that change?
Absolutely. And I'll give you a perfect example. For years, the city of Addison had an automatic aid agreement on the east side of Addison to cover a certain portion of Dallas. The difference here is that Dallas needed to put a fire station there, and they didn't want to fund it. So they worked out this agreement, and eventually it became more and more and more and more. It was such a lopsided agreement, Addison finally said, hey, wait, timeout, this is not working out. This is not what we thought it was going to be. And they bailed out, and eventually Addison, it forced Dallas to build a fire station like they should have. But in our case, like I said, they have three fire stations in Port and our city. So they're not trying to get out of something. They're just basically saying, okay, we're ready to start sharing resources. Now, we can definitely look at those call numbers. Yeah, if it gets to a trigger point, we're like, well, this isn't what we thought it was going to be, we need to reevaluate. And, and that's for me and the fire chiefs to work out. We can adjust those. There's some flexibility on, on drawing out and what, at what point do we add certain people to the initial call out, and things of that nature. So yeah, we definitely monitor those. And I, I'll tell you, we monitor those with everybody, all the surrounding cities. We monitor them all.
Great, thanks.
So going on with what you just said, that automatic response, I guess you said that's predetermined as to what's going to go where, but it is so lopsided in one way or another, is that something that you guys can work, get out where it does kind of shift the calls to more to one than the other, so that it would balance out more so?
Exactly. Yeah, there's flexibility to do that. I mean, you know, some can say, we're out. I mean, we can definitely go, hang on a second, maybe don't put our tiller truck second due on the aerial apparatus, let's put it third due. Okay, no problem. So we'll put, we'll move them down to be in the third due aerial apparatus instead of second due. Instead, we'll pull somebody from Grapevine, maybe, or, you know, we'll look to the region to do that. And so we have, we call them run cards, and we do that for everything. So it's, it's all prescribed out, all the way down. When they, when you see on the news when it says, hey, this thing went to three alarms, you know, what that means is one alarm, the typical, what one alarm means in the fire industry is three engines, a ladder truck, a chief officer, and an ambulance. That's, that's what that means. When they say you get a, a second alarm, you get that same response twice. So theoretically, we can only fill out the first alarm in Cockell, Texas, because we have three engines, one medic, and one chief officer, that's what's going to do. If we go beyond the first and second alarm, we have to start pulling out. If I need to pull a second alarm, Irving's not going to say, yeah, no problem, I'll send all three of my next fire trucks. You know, they're not going to do that. So what we'll do is we'll say, okay, we'll take one from Grapevine, one from Irving, and one from Farmers Ranch. Okay, then on a third call, then maybe we might go, okay, give me another one, give me another one, give me another one. So we won't just deplete them all at one time, and they won't deplete us at one time. So yeah, there's a lot of thought process put into the response call. Nobody wants to abuse it. It's just too much, too much at, at stake.
I had a couple of questions and a comment. That finally, that finally dawned on me. There was a really serious house fire eight, nine years ago in our neighborhood. And it was, I think there were three calls made, and there were fire trucks from, I think I counted 12 different cities. And it was because what you're talking about, they, they started going around and, and further and further out.
Yeah. So you're exactly right. And I think I know the call, John, I mean, we were tied up on something else and we weren't able to respond to it. And so we had to get help. And so as the caller done, like, hey, we're all busy, so no one's coming. I mean, so we, yeah, they want to know somebody's coming.
Sorry.
They didn't really care if it said Grapevine Fire Department, whatever it said, so. Yeah, I mean, those are response, and the same thing. And so it really comes into play during storm season. Because if a storm comes across the north side of the state, all the northern cities are busy, we get really busy, but the southern side's not. So they can come help us. Same thing for us on the backside.
So a couple of questions. This automatic aid is not going to just apply to that one set of 125 houses, this will be the entire...
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, it, it would allow opportunity for us to work across the boundaries of, of our southern city limits in Irving. I'll just tell you a short story real quick. Y'all remember when the Dallas Cowboys at Valley Ranch, the tent collapsed and killed all these people? I was on duty that day as the operations battalion chief. We had the technical, we had a tier-one technical rescue team that's FEMA-supported, sitting right across the street from our station, between. We knew it went down, we went over there, and got turned around. They said, no, turn, move in. They turned us away because we didn't have the agreement in place. And they, yeah, and that was a big incident, and we sat there and watched it.
That was huge.
Yeah. And that was a big, big, big incident, people still talk about that. And so, yeah, I mean, we just didn't have those agreements in place, and at the time, they just weren't prepared to utilize outside resources. And we're Irving, Texas, and if we need something, we'll get it, type deal. So it's been a lot of philosophical changes. So now, I mean, it's really unfeasible for somebody to, you know, we, we even offered just to be the backup team for their guys, and it just didn't work out. So we've come a long ways since then, I'm sure it's been probably close to 20 years ago.
Anybody have anything else?
Well, thank you for...
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank y'all for listening. I just wanted to take some time, explain that to you. And that item will actually be on the consent agenda.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
All right. Item E is discussion regarding the Beltline Construction Communication System. Mr. Collins.
Mayor, Council, part two of this discussion. So before I really get into this part two, I really want to go back and probably start where I should have in the last presentation, which is talk about why, why we proposed and implemented the system that we did on Freeport. So if you go back, we were, you know, in design on Freeport, we knew Beltline was coming, I mean, they were all already needed. Royal is, is on down the road. We're thinking of, what is it going to look like when we take Freeport down from a four-lane divided roadway to two lanes, one lane in each direction? How do we communicate? How do we communicate the best we can? And we started looking at around, we're looking at what TechDOT does, we do, look at what other cities do. You know, there's a lot of talk about smart work zones. And so, we started sort of brainstorming. How could we bring something to that project that could help motorists decide which route to use on any given day, right? Because if you're, and we knew on Freeport, obviously, it's a cut-through route, easy cut-through route from Flower Mound down through Irving. Flower Mound, I used to talk about. As soon as they make the connection from Sandy Lake up to 121, it's a great parallel route, or alternate route to 121. So, we knew that was happening, it would happen. So, in, you know, in that case, we brought this idea or this system to deliver real-time current travel time information to motorists. So, they could choose whether to use 121 or Freeport. And that's really the information we provided. It was on the road, and you really had a decision. If you stay on Freeport, it's this many minutes to LBJ. If you use 121, it's this many minutes down to LBJ, right? It was a very simple kind of binary decision, right? A or B, based on travel time. We didn't tell people, use 121, we didn't tell people, use Freeport. Just gave them the information and let them make that decision. So, that kind of gives you a little bit of background on why we proposed and recommended that system on Freeport. And, you know, when we were starting Freeport, we knew Beltline was a few years out, and we always anticipated that we would implement a similar system, maybe not the exact same system, but something similar on Beltline, to give people, motorists, residents, the information to choose the best route on any given day, at any given time. The initial idea was to basically replicate what we did on Freeport for Beltline. But I'll show, I'll show a graphic here in a minute that kind of depicts why that's, it's a much more complicated decision, just from a location standpoint, Beltline being in the middle of the city versus Freeport being on the edge. And you have, you know, several different alternate routes instead of the one natural 121. So, I just, I wanted to start with that background. Also, I wanted to mention that when we, when we've been talking about the budget for Beltline reconstruction, I probably use project budget. When I say that, I'm talking about construction, design, testing. In this case, this system, if we have project management assistance, kind of all that stuff that's necessary to build the project, those are all included in that project budgeting. And I try to be specific when I talk about the construction estimate. So, if I've kind of blended those, then I apologize, and that's on me. We'll try to be more clear on those discussions. But we always, we always expected and planned for a system like this for Beltline. Here's the map I was referencing. So, Beltline, the limits of construction are highlighted in blue. And in yellow, I've got Freeport, I have Royal, I have East Beltline, so East-West Beltline. I've got Airline highlighted there, as well as MacArthur. So, I want to walk through, you know, kind of how Freeport worked. So, if you were in Flower Mound or someplace up in, say, northeast Denton County, and you came down, you wanted to use Lakeside Parkway and just follow it down into Freeport through Copel, when Freeport was under construction, right as you approached 121, you would see a changeable message sign that gave you travel time information for 121 as a route or Freeport as a route. And it was taking you to the southern edge of Copel, so that intersection of Freeport and LBJ. And you could make that decision. Same thing happened in the evening returning. You would, you would encounter portable changeable message signs at the intersection of LBJ and Freeport, telling you, you can, you can stay on LBJ or you can use Freeport. So, that was a pretty simple decision for motorists. What we thought, well, when you look at Beltline, if you look at the blue line, it's more complicated. If you live on, you know, off of Sandy Lake near Denton Tap, and you use Beltline on a regular basis, but something happens on a particular day, it's not so easy to convey that information on a changeable message sign if you're heading south on Denton Tap, right? How do you, because there are going to be rolling messages. We have three screens that we get, three lines per screen. There's only so much information you can convey on PCMS. So, those messages need to be simple, but that is an option in this case. We could deploy changeable message signs. We could deploy the Freeport solution for Beltline. You know, as we discussed, the solution that we've, that we've brought forward now is more of a cloud-based solution. The data would be collected from the cloud. There's a company called Enrix. We, you know, I went through all that in our last discussion. We would get access, access to that data through a data sharing agreement with TechDOT and TTI. And then, the information would be fed through a Twitter feed. It would be an automatic feed that would fire up whenever certain travel time or delay criteria were met. So, if you're a motorist, all right, so put yourself back in the commuter seat. Now Beltline's under construction. For whatever reason, I've chosen that that's still my route, even though it's under construction. But I can check the, check my Twitter feed. I can check Twitter before I leave home in the morning and decide, okay, well, yep, Beltline's still okay. Or it's the average conditions, and I'm still going to use it, and I'm going to use Beltline. Or something has happened, there's additional delay on Beltline that morning, so I'm going to choose a different route. That's what that Twitter feed would, would tell somebody. If we, the other option would be, we don't implement a system. And in that case, right, you would use whatever it is you use on a normal morning, whether it's Waze or Google Maps. And it'll tell you, most likely, on most mornings, it's going to tell you, choose a different route, because there's going to be delays due to the construction on Beltline. And so, you know, if that's, if that's what we do, then that's the option. You know, cost-wise, I know that was one of the questions in our last discussion. So, I've gone ahead and added the message boards to the cloud-based solution, so it would give you kind of that last-minute basic information if you didn't check your Twitter feed. And in that case, we would probably just put up as a message that says, big delays on, you know, or abnormal delays on Beltline, seek an alternate route. And that would be north of Sandy Lake, if you were heading south on Denton Tap. That way, you could peel off, go over to Freeport or Royal, or you could go down and use East Beltline to MacArthur. So, that cost would be $120,000 plus the cost of the renting the boards. That'll be a cost that's part of our construction contract. The Freeport solution, to do the route changing and give those messages with the on-road sensors, is a $260,000 cost, plus the cost of renting eight message boards. So, we convey that same kind of information we did for Freeport. That's, so whatever that rental rate is under our construction contract, that's the cost of the Freeport solution. Obviously, the no-system solution, that's a zero-dollar cost. So, yeah, those are kind of the options. I just wanted to walk through that with you, seeing the difference between, you know, what we were dealing with on Freeport, that it is more complex with the Beltline option. So, with that, the, again, the recommended solution is the cloud-based solution. If we want to implement a communication system, you know, we feel like communicating on a daily basis to the motorists is that level of service that we've established with Freeport. It's what the residents and the motorists would expect on a project like Beltline. And this is the layout of that plan, the limits of the construction. We would be looking at data on Beltline, on East Beltline, on MacArthur, on Freeport, and on Royal. That would be part of our agreement, is to be monitoring that data, data on a real-time basis. And then, when delays exceed some threshold, then we would start posting to our Twitter feed. I'll mention, we have the Everbridge system. What we would see Everbridge is as a tool to post or send out information when we knew we were going to be doing something big. There's going to be a major closure, you know, we're going to be, whatever that is, you know, we, it's a predictable major impact to the average travel time on Beltline. That's where we would use Everbridge, or maybe our new website has a, an automated messaging system that people could sign up for. But that wouldn't be that, that kind of automated delay-based messaging. So, here's a kind of a real simple table breaking down, or, you know, kind of representing the options. Option one, no system. The motorists would just rely on, on their travel mapping, mobile travel mapping systems that they use today. We wouldn't be collecting or pulling down that data. There's no cost to that, no additional cost. The, or no cost for this system. The Freeport style, again, motorists would encounter those messages on the road via portable message signs just before their decision points. So, I would expect, we'd probably be around 300 feet north of Sandy Lake. That would be the first time you would see a message. You know, that's generally that reaction time that we would want people to be able to try to react. That cost is estimated at $260,000 plus the cost to rent the signs. The cloud-based solution, motorists would encounter the message, messages via the Twitter feed to select their route. You know, my encouragement would be, check the Twitter feed before you start moving. We want people to put their, their mobile devices down when they're driving, so they're not distracted drivers, so they don't have to call the chief and have them come out and help them when they have crashes. Simplified messages delivered via portable message signs right before the decision point. Again, just as a reinforcement of the Twitter feed, data sourced from Enrix via that data sharing agreement. And that's $120,000 for the contract plus the cost to rent the two signs. So, I'm not going to reread this. We are recommending the on-road message boards to supplement the Twitter feed. The scope does include user surveys as part of the effort. So, we would be surveying people. What I would envision, you know, there's two ways to do it. You just send surveys to everybody in Copel and ask for feedback. Do you use the system? Do you like it? How can we improve it? Or we send messages via that Twitter feed and say, hey, we'd like feedback on the system. Go to this, you know, click this URL and take the quick survey. So, we would, we would expect to do that during the plan or during the project, so. Next steps, based on feedback and direction tonight. We would come back to you with a contract for whichever system we decide to move forward with, so, or not.
Two things.
Yep. What was the second thing? That's a timeline on it. So, Mike asked, what's the timeline for Beltline bidding? We, it's on the street, so it's, it's being advertised right now. We'll have a pre-bid next week. We expect to, we'll receive bids or open bids last week of July. And then, we will bring it to the award. Assuming it's a contractor we're familiar with, we will bring it back for award the first meeting in August, which I think is the...
As part of your whole construction?
Right.
What were you estimating and kind of earmarking within that project budget that would have been communication?
Right, yeah. So, when we were thinking the Freeport system and kind of planning for that, we were, I think I said last time, a couple hundred thousand dollars. Once we went back and asked, what does that really look like when you lay it out? What's that cost? It's actually $260,000, so. All right. Thank you.
Eason?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation, a lot of the information. Question for Mike. From our previous budget discussion, you stated that we have half a million dollars in the hot tax left over.
Yes.
Can we use any of that fund towards 220 here?
No.
The assigns...
It's not, doesn't make anything in the statute for the hot tax. And remember, in the bond issue and the IMF and the sales tax, he has budgeted for communications in the project. So, we have the funds in place to do a communications plan if you give us permission to move forward with it.
And that's $200,000, correct?
He's identified $200,000, right?
Thank you.
Can you, can you go back to, sorry, can you go back to that slide where you had the, I guess, the list of?
Yeah, that one.
That $260,000 was the cost that actually was incurred for Freeport?
No.
No?
No. The Freeport cost was a little under $150,000.
Okay, but you were saying that would be the cost of Beltline if you went with the Freeport style now?
Correct.
Even though it's a, I guess, is it shorter?
It is, it's expanded program. I notice he's saying he's renting not only more signs, but the Bluetooth technology has to be distributed more than it was for Freeport.
Okay.
It's a different, it's the same system, but it has to be much more expanded to accomplish the same thing that we did at Freeport. Yeah, if I, if I go back to this...
Alternate route, you were saying?
Right, right. With Freeport, we were just looking at two routes. And with Beltline, we would be looking at all of, you know, four north, or three other north-south routes, plus the east-west routes to...
Kevin?
Ken, thank you for this presentation. I will tell you, for me personally, this is a lot, provides me, I think, proper background and things like that, because, to be very honest, at the first presentation, I, it came across as an additional cost on top of everything that had been kind of laid out. So, I appreciate you taking the time to come back and revisit this and really kind of lay out how the old system would compare versus a new system. So, it sounds like the new system that you're identifying, you're trying to save, save money by accomplishing more because you're trying to provide more route options and things like that. So, that background and that, I think, really helps me make a better decision about this. So, thank you for providing that information.
John?
You mentioned about, I guess, getting some survey. That's prior to we implement this, or is this after we implement this?
It would be after.
And if we do get some survey and it doesn't really show that it's being utilized, is there, is there going to be an option for us to, I guess, look for alternative way? Because it's not being utilized? It's not being efficient in terms of getting the message or for people to use the system? Is there an option to look for an alternative way, or?
What we would be specifically surveying is people that use the system to find out how we can make the system more effective. So, we're really targeting people that have chosen to continue to use Beltline. And we would expect that a lot of them will, will seek out the information. You know, we'll provide the information. Drivers still are going to have to access that information. So, and we will have the message boards. We'll still have two PCMS, changeable message boards, out on the road to provide the information to the folks that don't use the Twitter feed. to the folks that don't use the Twitter feed.
So there really isn't an alternative at this point, right?
Well, once we go down the path of, I mean, we could shut it down. That would be the alternative. Because we won't, we won't have in our construction contract the changeable message signs. We will not have purchased the Bluetooth sensors. I mean, we could pivot, but that's going to be additional cost if we decided to do that at some point during the, during the contract.
And this is all in addition to actually reach out to the residents via, whether it be?
Yes.
Letters or whatever it is?
Yes. Yes, we'll still do all of our traditional communication methods via website and the city's, the city's website, city's Twitter feed.
Yaman?
Just, thank you very much for this. I really appreciate it. Just for clarification, I know that, and you may have answered this and I maybe didn't process it, but I know that last time you made a comment of there is no additional cost because it's been built in, right? And so there is a delta here of about $140,000, right? So is that a savings to us by then going with the route of the Twitter feed?
Well, I think we've, so we had, we had looked at, I think, $200,000 for this system kind of built in as our, as our budget. So I guess there is, there would be some savings. I don't know exactly what that full savings is until we know what the, the sign rental is going to be.
That's the piece, okay, gotcha.
Right, so I don't think that's $50,000, but we'll know.
Because then that would be the, because then we could potentially go over by, on in one route, $60,000 plus the eight?
Right.
Signs or?
Or under by?
Potentially under because of the two signs that we think we need, right? Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood that part.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you know how long Enrix takes to compile the data to provide the, the upcoming messaging?
So we'll get the data on, on five-minute increments. It's pretty close to real time.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Do not leave.
What's that?
We need direction. Yeah.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
Thank you for the presentation and.
Didn't hear the and.
And we need some consensus around what you would like us to do.
I, I'm, I didn't hear any negative comments. I'm hearing, what am I hearing? Mark, I don't want to go around the table. What do I see in the nod of head?
Put that back to options.
Am I seeing everybody?
I, I guess I'll start. I mean, I, I'd like to go with option three. We know Freeport style worked, where I'm hearing that option three should be just as effective. And so I guess I'm going with three.
Three, 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 three. We got a, we got a consensus of three, or of four at least, I'm sorry, for number three.
Not to confuse us. Thank you very much. All right. And just real quickly, just so everybody knows, there will be traffic backed up on Beltline when it's being constructed, so.
What?
What?
Just have to say it. Oh, no, I, I didn't want to give that false impression whatsoever.
This is not, this is not.
No.
What are we spending money for?
Three, three lanes, three lanes down to one is not necessarily the math that's working very well.
So you're spending money to tell people what's going to happen so that when it happens to them, they're not quite as upset as if they didn't know. All right. Item F, discussion of library and city administration staffing. Mr. Quinn and Ms. Owens.
Dennis first.
Dennis first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pleased to be with you tonight. My purpose in speaking with you is to, essentially to seek authorization to fill a position that is not currently funded in the fiscal '21 budget, but also to identify cost savings that would allow us, with your authorization, to fill it with no net impact. And to kind of also walk you through the, through the implications of what this change would mean. To kind of give you the background, as many of you know, the Cosby Library has been a hub of activity in the community for many years. We typically serve, prior to COVID, we typically serve about 300,000 visitors per year, making 600,000 circulation transactions, offering 550 programs per year attended by about 19,000 participants. This is a pretty good level of activity. Among Texas public libraries, this activity level is higher than normal for a community our size. And based on 2019 data from the Texas State Library and Archives Commission, this is comparable of communities about twice the size of Capel, just to put it in perspective. So what this means is that Capel residents are power users of their public library, which is a great thing. At the quality and quantity of service that is expected by our community, it's historically taken us 21 and a half full-time equivalent staff to meet this demand. And so on the, on the screen in front of you, I've given you the breakdown of what that means in terms of just a more, I guess, comprehensible level of pace. That means we welcome on a regular basis between 1685 visitors per hour across eight hours per day, seven hours per day, prior to COVID, some 11-hour days. In terms of checkouts per month, that's 42,000 prior to COVID. It's actually gone up to 46,000 in the month of June this year since we finished the last phases of our reopening process. We'll recognize that we are not open as many hours per week, and I'll get into that later in my presentation. But that notwithstanding, we do see at least the same level of activity across most of our services as we had prior to COVID. So our staff, formerly 21 and a half full-time, now 19 and a half full-time, is comprised of leadership, librarians, technicians, and clerks. And the clerks are going to be the focus of my presentation this evening because that is where all of our frozen, that is unfunded vacancies currently reside. You'll see that we do have one halftime vacancy in our librarians. I'll get to that in a moment. But again, the focus of my, my, my talk with you tonight is the, is the clerk positions. Between the fall of '19 and the spring of '20, three of our clerk positions were vacated and have remained unfilled as frozen positions. That is two part-time positions and one full-time. These are authorized in the budget, but they have no dollars to fund them. Out of our total of eight and a half FTEs of clerks, these three positions make up about a quarter of our clerk capacity, right around 23%. What's important to know about our clerks is out of all of our staff, these are the folks who have the most to do with frontline customer service. And they are responsible primarily for supporting customer service across the range of all of our library services, both on, onstage and backstage, so to speak. To kind of put you in the shoes of what life is like as a clerk, it is, it is often a very physically and mentally demanding task. You work either a four-hour and eight-hour, eight-hour day, and you could be on your feet most of the time. If you're stationed at one of our four customer service points throughout the building, three on the main floor and one at our AMH window at the drive-through, that's a block of a couple hours where you are positioned and poised enough to ready to greet customers, to assist them with whatever they may come at you with, to answer questions that may have to do with library services or otherwise, and to assist them as best you can with pretty much anything that they may need, especially related to your account with the Cosby Library. From setup to initial setup, your, your registration, through anything that you may, you may encounter through your, your life as a Cosby member. And also keeping your eye out for situational awareness, trying to help maintain a conducive environment, which is subject to some of the variables, I can't name them here, especially over on the children's area. Our toddler zone does generate a lot of activity. Prior to COVID, the way we had it set up, it did involve a lot of tidying throughout the day, five or six times. You kind of get the picture. That's, that's sort of a taste of what the, the onstage life is like for a clerk. You may have four shifts per day at one of, one or more of our different service points. You may, you may have a shift where you're backstage, in which case you're helping with, with processing newly received items that are going into the collection, that have a little bit of physical processing, labels and cataloging that have to go along with them. You may be preparing returns as they come in from a return point, getting them checked in and ready for shelving. And then when you are eventually going up to shelf, if you're not stationed at a, at a service point, you are pushing carts, you're bending, you're lifting, you're stooping, you're pushing, you're pulling. You may shell things that are way on, like right down the floor, up to six or more feet up in the air. So you kind of get the picture. This is what life is like as a, as a clerk. Again, I said we have four posts, four front service posts for clerks and also duties that have to happen backstage. So that is why we need more than four FTE. Historically, 8.5 FTE is what we've had. So essentially, these three positions have taken away. By being vacant, this removes half of our backstage capacity in, in terms of what clerks are called upon to do. So as of the beginning of June 2021, as I mentioned, our visitor traffic has returned to pre-COVID levels as compared to spring of 2020. And now that we're emerging from the COVID pandemic with less frontline staff than we had at the beginning of 2020, a lot of the choices that we've had to make around how we position our frontline service has had to deal, has had to do with this difference in clerk capacity. Necessarily, a lot of this workload has fallen and had to be absorbed by technicians and librarians, whose highest effectiveness is elsewhere. Though there isn't, we do train all of our staff to provide some level of frontline customer service, the amount of time that they have available to do that, the librarians and techs is less. Their primary function is elsewhere, in developing and maintaining the collection, planning and developing and implementing programs, and providing a, a sort of a deeper level of, of customer support on the backside. So as the workload of these vacant positions has had to be partially absorbed by technicians and librarians, we offset a bit of the capacity by, by reducing the number of hours per week that we were open, as I mentioned earlier. That was one move that we made in, in response to not having as much frontline capacity as we had before. Even so, with 75% of the hours that we had before, we're still having to tap our librarians and techs a lot to fill in this demand for frontline customer service because we still have customers coming in the front doors and through the window, the drive-through window, not through the window, but driving through. I think you get my meaning. So obviously, having to, having to have our librarians and techs absorb this workload has spillover effects onto their effectiveness. It pulls capacity away from their higher areas of effectiveness and therefore they're being underutilized by definition. And over time, this will make, it'll make it more difficult for us to uphold the quality of service that our community has come to expect. So this is the pinch that we've, that we find ourselves in, and hence the reason that I'm asking the recommendation that I'm asking for you in a moment. Most recently, in June 2021, one of our part-time librarians position, the orange block that's on the screen in front of you, became vacated by way of a retirement. And this position is authorized in the current budget and is funded. Also, our current budget year, our current year budget also includes funds for one seasonal summer position that was not deemed necessary this year due to our scaled back programming as we're climbing out of COVID. And we anticipate that by not filling the part-time librarian position and foregoing the seasonal summer staff for this year and for the foreseeable future, this will create the cost savings necessary for us to balance out our positions, to balance out our staffing, and make us, put us in a position to support sustainably the demand that we're seeing now and for the foreseeable future. So to summarize our recommendation and to kind of simplify the picture, to remove the, the filled positions that are not on the table, to, to focus solely on the vacancies, the change that we're proposing looks like this. To take the two funded positions that are on the right side of the screen and effectively unfund them in exchange for funding and filling a full-time library clerk position. And that is the essence of the recommendation request that I'm putting before you tonight. And with that, I would be happy to address any questions.
Isher?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Sir?
A lot of good information. Question for you. Pre-COVID was 21.5 FTE?
Yes, sir.
And today is 19.5?
19.5.
19.5. So the two positions was, one awakened because it was retired, and what happened to the other?
So the two, the two FTEs are actually three positions because two of the positions are part-time positions. They're the three that are on the screen on the left side for you. The full-time and the two part-time library clerks add up to two FTEs. So that's the difference, that's the delta between 21.5 and 19.5.
So Mike, the 29 positions that we froze or put up hold, none of these positions are in?
No, they were in there.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yes, sir. The, the three clerk positions that are on the left column are included in those frozen positions.
Right, they were, they were part of the original freeze prior to COVID. It was a result of the discussion we had about the implementation of 334 when it was going to go into effect in April. That's when we shut everything down.
Right.
And then COVID hit, and so we never filled the positions because we, you know, weren't open for a while and opened modified hours. And, you know, per the continuing conversation, now that we're open as a result of COVID, what Dennis is explaining to you is our visitations and checkouts and everything else are actually now pre-COVID, but I, he's operating on less hours with less people, but the volume is still as high, if not higher, than pre-COVID. So the request tonight, when he does the magic, I love that, by the way, when he does that magic is to.
I don't know, he can go back the other way.
So I will tell you all that next Thursday night on the 22nd, I will be giving you a, because it's not on the agenda tonight this way, but I'll be giving you a plan to fully fund the rest of the positions here and over at the core so that we can reopen those hours fully before. That's a longer-term conversation for what he's trying to do right now. The sooner we can get these advertised, you know, this position advertised, we can get it filled because it does, it hasn't, I'll call it a net zero, there's, you know, in terms of the dollar amount of back. But it gets some, excuse me for saying it this way, it gets a body in there that helps them immediately start being able to serve what we already have to deal with.
All right, thank you. So just, just for clarification purposes, because I get inquiry from parents who want to send the kids on, you know, Wednesday, 6:30, and the library's closed.
Yes, sir.
So can you just repeat hours of operation now with the staff you have today?
Absolutely. At a, as of right now, our week of service is Mondays and Tuesdays from noon until 8:00 PM, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays from 10:00 AM until 6:00 PM, and then Saturdays from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. And at the moment, we are closed on Sundays.
That's with the 19.5 staff?
That is with 19.5, yes, sir.
And the staff with this one, those hours would stay the same. It's not till I get the additional people till we can expand the hours.
Yes, this, this is intended.
So that, this is, when I call it the more immediate, just to deal with the current demand that we have with the hours that we have. He can't, even with this one, he can't manage to open on Sundays and expand the hours as well.
So how many more staff you need to go back to the pre-COVID hours of operation?
I think it's going to be at least two.
It would be two or if not all three of those unfunded positions to get back up to the 21.5 FTE to be able to support our previous schedule.
Right. And that's what I'm going to describe to you next Thursday about, okay, here's a plan and a way to address that. Because we, we still have the funding challenge.
Kevin?
Actually, that line of questioning answered half of my questions. I, I appreciate you guys filling in information. And my question originally was going to be, will that get us back open on Sunday? So completely understand the challenges with the budget that, you know, that we have. So obviously, in the recommendation, you, you really want that clerk position, and you're trading out the part-time librarian. You feel comfortable with the, with the level of work, like being able to operate, okay, without that part-time librarian, but that, that frontline clerk position is the need and the priority at this point, is what you're saying. That's going to help you provide that higher level of service due to the volume increase that you're seeing.
It's, it's going to position us to support our current level of service more sustainably.
Perfect, okay.
But yes, I mean, ob, it's not optimal to, to leave any position unfunded. We would love to be able to serve as much as we could. But what we would be, what we would be giving up by foregoing the librarian position is not as urgent right now as what we need by filling the full-time clerk position.
Perfect, thank you.
Do the little switch for me too, so I can just kind of visually see.
Happily.
If you don't mind, thank you.
That's very classy, by the way.
Yeah, I like that. Okay, that way I can just kind of visually see where, where, what leaves, what's left unfunded and what we leave funded. So Mike, for clarification, if, if the consensus is yes, go with the funded position right now, right? That's immediately.
Right.
And then, so my question then was going to be as far as budget and getting back to the hours pre-COVID. If at budget, we say, you know what, there's funding, you can have more people, would that be in 2022 then?
That, that would be the plan. That would be the plan. If you tell me to do it immediately after you hear what the plan is, then we can start working to make it happen. Now, he's not going to be able to open until he has that staff, right? So it's not an immediate, you say Thursday night, for example, okay, go. Our hiring process will take probably about 45 to 60 days, so the earliest we can get back to Sundays and longer hours from, let's say, next Thursday is, let's say, September. So we're still talking around October 1st, but if in the budget, so either way, in the budget, say Thursday night, you take thumbs up.
Right.
You're probably talking October 1st anyway, because then that gives me the authority to go ahead and start the advertising process.
And, okay, and I understand that, and I, I'm fine to go either way. I mean, I'm, I'm all for making sure you have what you need and only you know what you need and, and, you know, you understand what the, what, what you need to function at full capacity with, with the current environment and the, the number of people that are coming in. I guess for me, as I'm thinking through it and knowing that we're going to talk about this on Thursday, like I guess I want to have a full picture of just understanding who are we, who are we trying, who are we hiring? Because if, if we say go forward, like, I guess my question to you, Dennis, would be, if we say there's funding, would you go and, and hire all one, two, three, four, five people, or would you say no?
I'm recommending five people.
Well, I know, but any, but any, any variation of what's up there. So I, I'm wondering if today's conversation is premature Thursday or not?
It's not, it's not premature, because even after you tell me the whole story, that's what I'm trying to say to you, even after I tell you the full story, I'm not hiding, I think, I'm just telling you, as part of the overall budget conversation, there's much more to it. You know, if you pick and choose now, it's not the whole story. But we have the capability, based on what we told you we would do in the budget process when we said we would come to you, much like we did with Jennifer's position in finance, there's an unfunded position, this is the work that's being done, this is the work that needs to be done. He's telling you, look, by chaining out part-time, he's identified, by trading out part-time, I function better with a full-time clerk.
Gotcha.
Right? So, so he's, he's telling you that's how that operates. When we talked about the bigger picture, whether it's, like I said, the core, the library, there's other things, services that we've reduced because of the reduced budget, that, that is an all-encompassing conversation that's just not about the library.
Gotcha. Okay.
Right?
Understood.
So of your clerks, how many are full-time and how many are part-time?
We have six full-time and five part-time in reserve that would get, yes, six full-time plus five part-time yields eight and a half, eight and a half FTE. That's if, that's if all of our positions were filled. So at the moment, it is, it escapes me. It's, it's a mixture of full-time and part-time.
So when you, looking down the road, you've got two part-time clerks, wouldn't you just make your part-time current clerks just full-time?
That is an option that we've offered in the past, not everybody takes it, some people, some of the occupants of these positions prefer a part-time job.
I got you. Yeah, there's also an interesting demand in the library world about who decides to work and who not.
Yeah. And secondary to that, advantages to having part, part-time positions offer a bit more flexibility in scheduling than a full-time position. But, but a lot of it does come down to the preference of the individuals who are in the position.
But there's no difference in benefits between a part-time and a full-time employee?
No, we, all of, all of our positions in the library are benefits eligible.
Okay. And are they hourly or are they?
They're hourly.
So if they work overtime, they have to take overtime?
That's correct.
Anybody have anything else? John?
Is the library ran completely by paid staff, or are there any volunteers that actually work in certain positions at all?
We, we do have a high volunteerism rate, but we do not have volunteers involved with functions that are served by paid staff. There's a, there's a very clear delineation between the two. That is to say, we don't have any permanent volunteers, so to speak, who are, who have the regularity and level of responsibility of a paid employee.
Have we actually seeked out volunteers in a longer term? And, and the reason why I ask, because I see CISC always has volunteers at the front step, frontline, and they're always out there and doing that for a number of years as well. And I just don't know why, if we actually have seeked out those type of volunteers for the library as well.
We do. In fact, summer is a, is a peak season for volunteer involvement. The, the flip side of, of the volunteer equation is that there has to be someone to coordinate and manage the volunteer, so that falls to paid staff. We are, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We are currently working with staff to evaluate our, our volunteer process and our volunteer management system right now for, again, for something that we can sustainably support, because it has grown to be quite a thing. But we're, we're not at the point of, we haven't, we haven't solicited or sought out a volunteer to do the level of, the level of service that a paid employee would be needed for.
I mean, I think opposed really abundant of people that wants to volunteer, whether, whatever that position may be, and, and I'm not sure if we actually explore enough of people that could maybe even cover some of the, some of the things that not everybody, not all the position, but I mean, some position and some things that could be filled with a volunteer position. So I think we should seek and see if there is a, a willing bodies that wants to, you know, spend their time as well in the library and do those kind of things.
I, I thank you, I understand your, I understand your input, thank you.
John?
Just to clarify and make sure I understood, so for this particular request, it's a zero-sum game as far as personnel expense or from a budget standpoint, everything for the rest of this year, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Because even though there's a delta between, it sounds like the new spot's $7,000 more than the.
Yes.
The one that you lost, or, or maybe that's the other way, but between that and the seasonal, it's a zero-sum game, all right?
The part-time librarian plus the seasonal equals the full-time clerk.
Okay. All right.
That'd be cool.
Thank you.
Did anybody have anything? Rihanna?
Circle back around, there's a funded position for two part-time or three, whatever it may be, you want a full-time person, and that's what you feel like your need is. And I would just say I support that.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
Bam.
All right. We've got three, anybody oppose that? Don?
I do not oppose.
Was that a thumbs up or a slap?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were about.
You have to raise your hand really high.
Councilmember Long?
Yeah, just a quick comment. All right, I'm actually not going to ask anything. Dennis, thank you very much for the presentation and the, the time that you and your managers spent in working this thing out to make something, to present to us something is quite obvious. And so I thank you.
Thank you.
Now.
Sir, what would you like to do now?
We're halfway through the vote.
Okay, it's, it's an opinion, so.
Yeah, okay.
Do I have a thumbs up from, I got a thumbs up down there? Okay, we got a majority of at least five. So continue on. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to seeing the presentation on, in the next third floor. And just as a, as a comment, when it comes time to select the library board for, in October, for those of you that have never done library board, you will never run into a more passionate group of people.
Oh, yeah, they're awesome. They are so passionate.
It's the most fun group you will ever interview. So now everybody's going to ask for that group. Okay, Ms. Ashley?
All right, thank you, Mayor Councilor.
You are not on the agenda.
Yes. Say hello.
Am I not?
I'm kidding.
She's like, okay.
I'm kidding. You have time too.
Yes. So thank you for hearing me tonight. I would like to add that I asked Dennis to do my presentation, but he denied my request. So you're actually going to hear from me? So this work session item is to request partial funding for the deputy city secretary position, as I stated in my memo. And before I go into detail regarding tonight's request, I just want to give you a little bit of background regarding the duties of a municipal clerk, which is different from a library clerk, and the duties and responsibilities that lie within the city secretary's office. And also, to limit the amount of syllables that I actually have to verbalize, I'm going to say city secretary's office is CSO, and the deputy city secretary is the DCS. So the CSO is responsible for elections administration, city council support, which is my favorite, records management for the city.
I'm excited.
I'm sorry. City council support, records management for the city, city council-appointed boards
and commissions, public information requests, alcohol permits, the website administration of our site, liability claims, as well as the administration of this office's budget in coordination with the city manager's office. So in October 2020, the office experienced a shift when Crystal Potinas moved across the hall into the chief of staff role in the city manager's office, and I was elevated to city secretary. Since that time, those duties have been fulfilled, but the priorities have definitely shifted. So items with deadlines that are required by local government code, as well as city council support, have been moved up the ladder, with everything else being lower prioritized. So despite working overtime, weekends, and through vacations for the past nine months, it has been determined that the demand and the workload is exceeding capacity. The DCS will be primarily responsible for receiving and responding to public information requests, records, the city's records management program, boards and commissions, agenda building for city council meetings, workshops, and special call sessions, the division's webpage, and also a new component of this is that they will be moving to the front of the city manager's office. So they will be the ones that greet and receive all visitors, phone calls, and any kind of flybys that we have. This was previously an office position, so now they've been moving to the front, front stage. As stated in the memo, the DCS position is an authorized position in the fiscal year budget 2021, but it is not funded currently. Recently, the administrative support assistant that used to sit in the front of the CMO has become vacant. So staff is requesting to use the budgeted salary for that position and partially fund the DCS position. The admin support assistant would remain authorized but become unfunded. Therefore, the additional money is what is being requested to be added to the city administration And in overall, filling this position will provide this office with a more cohesive vibe, if you will. This office works best when there are two certified, highly educated, highly skilled individuals that work together, and the goal is for our office to become more engaged in the community as well as in the organization. Previous to the, the shift, if you will, Crystal and I were very engaged with voter registration drives, national night out, and educational opportunities throughout the city with administrative staff. So that is the goal for it, to get back to that level of service, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Just a, just a comment. Anytime that any of us, and I, I do quite often send a question in, it often funnels through her. And so, you know, when she talks about, you know, support, it's, it's, you know, it's supporting us, quite honestly. Okay, any questions? Rihanna?
So the intent would be to not backfill the administrative.
That is correct.
Right, and this person would fill both roles?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. And first of all, thank you for coming forward, great presentation, enjoyed the comment there in the middle. You actually do a lot, a lot, and I know you work overtime and answer all of our questions in a very, very timely fashion, and have done a phenomenal job. So whatever we can do to support you, I'm in favor for, for doing that, and it, it would be great to get back to that level of engagement, but there's only so much you can do when you're trying to just stay above water.
That's correct.
So I'm in favor for that.
Don?
Thank you, Ms. Owens. I am very supportive of this role, because not only that, it also has a lot of impact. It sounds like the, the job duties are, they interface with citizens quite often also. So that's, that's good for the community as a whole, that we actually have another touch point for citizens, so that's great. On, and this is where I wonder about the budget, that, you know, we're about to go into budget season, this almost sounds, almost cart before the horse, because it sounds like we have to put $18,000 out of fund balance to take care of the delta, but I guess, as we go into the next year's budget, this, that will all be taken in, I mean, there's a plan.
Right, it'd be incorporated in the overall budget, answer to your question.
Yeah.
So when you see, the answer is yes, go forward, there'll be amended budget that comes after the audit, basically, that's what Jennifer and Kim bring.
Okay.
Because they bring two amended budgets a year. And then as far as the budget incorporating in the budget, the overall budget, the position would then just be incorporated in the administrative assistant position is the frozen position, so it's taken out.
And, and going forward, I'm trying to think the best way to ask this, there's, in the, in the next year's budget, you have a plan for how, I mean, we need these additional dollars permanently, it sounds like, if that's going to happen, right? So there is a, it sounds like there is a plan for next year's budget, either to find savings somewhere else, or we're just going to ask for an increased budget or something, right?
It's, it, it all gets incorporated in the budget, you know.
Right.
You know, we're, we're keeping our expenses at about the same levels we're keeping them this year, so let's just say that. So the budget you're going to get is it 63, 65? 65, so we're at it, when we approve the budget this year, we approved it, let's just say at 65. You're getting a budget that's about 65.
Okay.
So we're, we're just making it all work.
Okay. No, that's fine, I just, and I'm supportive of the position for sure, I just, I'm trying to think ahead, because we are about to be talking about budget again.
Yes, that's the approach we took to the budget, it was keep it at about the same expenditure as where we were last year.
Thanks.
Mark?
And did you say where that delta came from?
In this, well, right. Yes, for the, for right now.
In this case, it's just through the reserve.
Through the reserve, okay.
So with your hiring period to be 45 days, thereabouts, are you going to be able to fill this one before the fiscal year?
I defer to Ashley, you know, her process.
That is my, that is my goal. Just, I would love to have somebody in before the boards and commissions process.
We would all love for her to have somebody in before the boards and commissions process.
Yes, we would.
Yes, that's a lot.
Okay, John?
So you talked, it says that additional 18,000 will be added to the, the budget. What is the actual number for this position that we're going to be looking at moving forward?
It is 63,000 budgeted, or, excuse me, salary.
The mid.
That is the midpoint, that is the midpoint range.
What was that number?
63,000.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Any other questions? Can we have a thumbs up, a thumbs down? Thumbs up? Thumbs up? Two, three, four, five? We got a consensus.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The time is 7:19, we're at the end of the work session, and we're adjourning from work session. We'll be starting city council meeting in the regular session at 7:30, and please take a cupcake that's in the.
So, yeah.
Council members, please come up front.
Howdy, everybody.
The time is 7:30 PM, and we're moving into regular session. As a reminder, those wishing to speak during citizens' appearance or during a public hearing must sign in on the appropriate sheet outside the council chambers and list their residence address. Tonight, we have student ministry director Brian Vranikar with the Capel Bible Fellowship, who will be giving our invocation, and then we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. So please rise and remain standing.
Let's pray. Father God, we are so grateful for who you are, we're grateful for what you've done for us, what you are doing for us, and what you promise to do in the future. We're thankful for your beautiful creation, Lord, and the fact that you have created each individual person in your own image, on purpose, and for a purpose. Lord, we're grateful for your love for us, for your mercy and your grace towards us, even in our mistakes and our failures, Lord. We thank you for your Son, Jesus, that you loved us enough even in our rebellion against you to send your Son into this world, to become like one of us, and to die in our place for our sins, to rise from the dead, conquering death. And we thank you for your promise that by simple faith in your Son, Jesus, we can have forgiveness of sins and the free gift of eternal life. We are grateful for who you are, and, Lord, we thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight, to gather freely together, and I pray for just the proceedings of this meeting, that everything would go smoothly and according to plan, and, Lord, I pray that each person in this room would come to know your immense love for them. It's in your name we ask, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Item number five on our agenda is the citizens' appearance. Ms. Owens, do we have anybody signed up? We have nobody signed up, so we're gonna forego with the obligatory reading. Item number six is swearing in of city council place three. I would request that city judge Christine Primrose and Don Carroll meet in the front.
All right, please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Don Carroll.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of city council place three.
The duties of the office of city council place three.
Of the city of Capel.
Of the city of Capel.
The state of Texas.
The state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, council member.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, council member Carroll.
Thank you.
This is a very, I've never done this, so I wanted to take the opportunity to tell you that place three is very special in my heart. We're expecting great things, and congratulations, and welcome to the Capel City Council.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, you gotta get your name.
Hello, ma'am.
I will take just a moment to thank my wife, Tiana, and my three girls for allowing me to do that and for taking this ride with me. I'm very excited to, to serve the city of Capel, and we think, Tiana and I both think it's very important that our girls see us serving in our communities, in our city, in our school, in our church, and this is just another example. So thank you to the four girls for allowing me to do this, so excited, excited for this. Thank you very much.
Item number seven is a Keep Communities Safe presentation by Chief Danny Barton. I'm really looking forward to this, because I think I have a hint of what's gonna be in here, and I'm really wanting to hear it again. Chief Barton?
Thank you, Mayor, most of all for that pressure. Mayor, Council, first of all, thank you very much for allowing me to do this, and Mr. Land letting me to do this. I also brought the smartest guy in the police department with me today. He's our, excuse me, he's our crime analyst, Jim O'Connor. Everything you're gonna hear and see tonight, numbers-wise, comes from his fingertips. I can go to this guy at any given moment and ask a question that I think is difficult and have an answer in about two minutes. I mean, this guy's on top of everything. We just had a crime in Capel, I don't wanna go into it right now, but he's already developed a suspect, so that's how good this guy is, so glad to have him, he's an asset to this city, and I think he's one of the best at what he does. So I wanna, I've been approached a few times, most recently at Coffee with Cops last Saturday, that there were some social media posts revolving around a possible spike in thefts. And so I looked at the thefts data, and thefts typically do go up in the summer months, that's a pretty typical thing. I've been working in Capel for a lot of years, that's not, that is not new to me, but I wouldn't call it a spike. And the other thing about thefts in Capel, and I'm gonna get into it a little bit later, is, is how they're tracked and how, how many crimes are considered thefts, it's, it's a lot of stuff. Again, we, we experience a little bit of an upturn every summer. So I went to the. Not working. So I pulled the crime data from 2020 off the city's website, and this is just the Part 1 crime, this isn't the overall picture, this doesn't capture every single thing that happens in Capel, but it captures our, our, our bigger crimes, so to speak. And if you look at this graph, and you see those huge columns going up, you think, oh my gosh, you know, what is going on? And what I see in this graph is a very safe community, because if you look at the other crimes that we track, such as murder, sexual assaults, robberies, aggravated assaults, those are all very low numbers, and, and that is a testament to this community. The burglaries, I'll, I'll let you know upfront, a burglary is a theft from a building. So if you leave your garage door open at your house overnight and someone steals your bicycle or your weed eater, that's gonna go into the burglary category. And a lot of the burglaries you see listed are crimes similar to that. We don't have a lot of burglaries where they actually smash the windows and go in. We've had a few pharmacies experience that, but it's, like I said, it's two or three. And then the U-U-M-V on the very, on the far end, that's when someone steals a car. That's unauthorized use of a motor vehicle. But sometimes, a stolen car will be listed as a theft, depending on the value of the car, right? So what are the thefts? The reason the theft bars are so high is because so many crimes go, get pushed into that category. You have fraud-related thefts, we have shop liftings, we have, I'm gonna talk about burglary of motor vehicles today, thefts when people are having, you know, repairs done on their house and something comes up missing, same thing employers, you know, somebody leaves their cellphone in a break room and somebody takes it, we, a lot of things, organized retail theft, theft of service, we do have a lot of, I call it cyclical thefts, which is, it just depends on what is wanted in the criminal markets. So we've had times where, we've had crews come into Capel and take wheels off of trucks, and we've had substantial numbers of those, but then they drop off, we don't, we don't have any for months, and then we've had, they'll come in and take tailgates off of Fords, and they'll take like 10, and we don't get another one for another year. So it's, it's a very difficult thing for us to strategize around in terms of a policing strategy. Our numbers in Capel, crime-wise, are very low, and we can't apply the typical predictive model statistics that you'll hear bigger cities talk about, data-driven policing and things like that. I actually took our data to a, the statistical lieutenant from one of the big cities in the metroplex, and he looked at the numbers and said, "I can't do anything with these low numbers." He goes, "Congratulations on your crime rate." And so, he said, "You would need about 30 a week," and we're not even getting, you know, two a day, so. So that's why that graph looks high, and you can see in the upper right-hand corner, Jim has broken it down by month, and you can see that there, there's a little bit of a speed, you know, May was a little bit low, but, and this is during COVID, so this was a very unusual year for us, some of these numbers. And I think everybody being at home, you know, package thefts, you know, Amazon is now, I think, the number one retailer, right? And package thefts have gone up tremendously as well. But, so what do we do as a police department when we have these kinds of numbers? We're always mindful of the numbers, and Jim O'Connor is constantly providing us heat maps, he's constantly giving us what we can have, however, again, the data is so low, it's not really a model that I could send an officer into certain beats. And so what we do is we try to have a consistent police strategy that, because we have more than just these crimes to deal with, we have alarms, we have car wrecks, we have all kinds of things, and, and so we, we just maintain a pretty, I, I call it normal policing strategy. So we don't really police to the data, because the data just tells us where it already happened. We wanna go to where it's, it may happen, and that's not gonna be, we're not gonna pull that off. We do it sometimes, but it's a lot of luck, right? The bigger way we catch these criminals in the act, because we catch about 40 to 43% of our arrests are, are people caught in the act of a crime, and then the rest are people that just have warrants, and so, but we don't do that alone, we do that with the help of the citizens. And the citizens, when they call us, we go to every call, and we go pretty quick. We've got a really fast response time, and, and so that's, that's, in terms of, in the field, that's what we do. We also use a lot, a little bit more proactive policing during the hours when many of these are, are committed. So if you're a citizen in Capel, and it's 2:00 in the morning, and you need to go get something, and you. Capel, and it's 2:00 in the morning, and you need to go get something, and you get pulled over for something that you think was ridiculous, just know that that's how we catch people who commit crimes at night. They don't have a sign on their car that says, I'm the criminal. Here I am. And if you are a citizen who's going to the store or whatever, you know, we'll make that stop quick and let you go. But, you know, we're, I think we do a really good job of staying in the, in the community and staying very visible. Some other things we do is, we do have great resources, and I thank the council for all the resources that we do have, such as our license plate reader program, some of the, some of the trackers that we use on cars and things like that. Those are great, but they don't prevent crime. They just solve crime. And what we want to do is prevent crime. I don't, I don't want to have to go look for the bad guy. I'd rather him just go to another place. We do put out social media posts quite a bit, and we try to do PSAs on, you know, lock your doors on your cars. We punch those out a lot. We've had, we just had a town meeting. We plan to have more town meetings. And in those town meetings, the whole town meeting is about how can we keep Capel safer as a community. And so, and then, we have an app. If you don't have the Capel Police App, I highly encourage you to get it, because there is a button on there that says Crime Map. And you can go into there, or you can go to our website. And if you go to the page where our statistics are on, right below it is the Crime Map link. And you can go into, it'll bring up a map of Capel, and you can go over to the side, put your date range in. You can get all kinds of menu items, and you can see what's going on in Capel. Now, because the cities around us use it, when you punch in thefts, you're going to see all these dots pop up. Well, that's, that's also all the cities around us. So, make sure you're just staying in Capel. Because I did that the other day, and I was like, what's going on? It's another city. National Night Out is huge. Again, we use that to educate our citizens. We, our citizens are, we have amazing National Night Out turnout. And that's important to crime reduction, because when you know your neighbor, you know which cars need to be there and which cars look out of place. You know, you just, you can check on one another. That is a huge factor in a safe community. And then I'll talk about Allies in Community in just a minute. So, that's the things that we can do from the police perspective. And but, the reason I use the word community, keeps communities safe, is it takes all of us. It can't just be the police, you know? And there are some things that the citizens can do to help us out, and help us to help them, right? And so, I'd like to talk about one particular part of our thefts that they may be seeing on social media that might be driving some of the, I guess I'll say, next slide? And so, this, this is the Part 1 crimes to date of this year. So, it's the same chart as we just saw, but this is, this is what's going on this year. Oh, thank you. As you can see, the theft, the thefts are still going to be the tallest. And then, he broke it down by month on the top right. And then, if you look at the bottom right, you can see year-to-date, our Part 1 crimes are down right now. And so, that's, that's, again, it's, they're kind of like the stock market. The stats go up, and the stats go down at times. But right now, we're trending down in some of these areas. So, burglary of motor vehicles is without a doubt the single category that we probably have the most crimes in, hands down. And a burglary of motor vehicles, when a person enters a vehicle without consent to steal something, to commit a theft. We track ours a lot closer than some PDs. If you, if they go into the car here in Capel, and they don't take anything, or they don't, they didn't find anything, we still report that, and we put it towards our stats. Some cities who don't have the resources or the time, they don't even take those reports. It's just, they just move on. I think it's important that we keep track of everything, so that we have an honest look at what's going on in our community. But as you can see, this is from 2017 to 2020. You know, in 2020, we did have a surge of burglary of motor vehicles. And it went up quite a bit. And those, those 246 burglary of motor vehicles accounted for 42% of all the crimes that were in that tallest theft graph I showed you earlier. So, that's, that's a big one. The other big one we have right now that, that even
What's the percentage if you add it, 50 catalytic converters?
So, catalytic converters are being stolen in the nation right now at alarming rates. And we have had our fair share of them. We've had 48 of them here this year. And when you put those, the burglary of motor vehicles together with the catalytic converters, that's 58% of our total thefts so far. Now, the thing about the burglary of motor vehicles is, this is a breakdown of how entry was made into the vehicle. And 79.2% of the cars were unlocked. And that is where we really want to educate this community, because 80 to 90, maybe 90-plus percent of the time, if they grab the door handle and shake it, and it's locked, they just move on. They just go to the next car. 12% of the time, they actually smash the window. And I'll show you some stats on that. 4% of the time, or 11 times, they used a pry tool. There's other ways to get into a car. They could pry the door. They can pry back windows, things like that. And then 11 were attempts. So, what we really need from the community, when you see this, is if we would lock our car doors, man, we could, we could substantially reduce these numbers. So, this is the 2021 data. Man, I can't see this. So, these are the burglary of motor vehicles we've had this year by month. And so, we had seven in January. It was a spike of 24 in February. How does a spike of 24 happen? Probably, when they go, because sometimes they'll come in, they'll go to an apartment complex, and they'll hit like 10, right? Like, one night, they'll hit 10, and then we won't have another one for a week and a half, two weeks. And then the next month, in March, we had five, you know? So, when you're talking about a policing strategy, you're looking for five crimes in a month. That's a needle in the haystack. And that's why we need the community's help. If you see something unusual, call us. I guarantee you're going to get an officer there way faster than you think. And then in May, we had 19. And so, year-to-date, you can see on the top right, we're, even the, we're trending downward on burglary of motor vehicles as well. We had 102 at this time last year, and we have 59 to date. And again, it's 44%, or you can see the percentage of total thefts for each month. Now, this is the 2021 entry data. I didn't do a pie chart on this one, because we wanted to show the citizens. The first, on the top there, you got 60 of the BMVs were unlocked. And of those 60 that went, they went into, seven of them had a purse or a bag in plain view. So, the other, the others, they're just going in there and looking for whatever. And when they broke the window, they broke the window of 10 of the cars, and in all 10 of those, there was a purse or a bag in plain sight. So, that's the other thing, is if, take your things into your house at the end of the day, or if you're at the dog park, put them in the trunk. We had, we had a wallet stolen today out of the, out of an unlocked car at the dog park. And before the person even knew the wallet was gone, all of his credit cards have been used in another town. So, it's very important to hide your stuff, because if, if they look, and they see it, they're going to go after. And then the prize, they didn't get anything. So, those are the, so I bring these stats, because I think this, this is the one that we, as a community, can have the most impact on, is lock our doors, take our belongings in. We are going to continue to push out social media messages. We're going to continue to try our very best to educate our community. Our officers do a really good job. They stop and talk to the management at all the apartment complexes, and ask them to send out reminders. And so, since it's trending down, maybe some of that's working, but we still have too many of them going on. Oh, stop time for that. So, so in conclu, I say in conclusion, the biggest thing about crime, especially in Capel, is, is we are a community that is completely, I say completely, invested in our safety. You know, we had a great turnout at Coffee with Cops. A lot of people asking us questions on, you know, what do I need to do? What can I do to help? You know, and this is a community effort. All these crimes are a community effort. And, and being a witness, calling the police, locking your doors, taking your things inside. Don't leave your purses in plain view. You know, we hear this a lot, and I hate to say this, but we go and take these reports, and the citizen goes, but I'm in Capel. Great, and I'm glad you feel that safe, but crime still happens in Capel. And it's going to always hap, it's always happened the whole time I've worked here. People come from other communities. The large, the vast majority of these crimes are not committed by people that live here. You know, half the people that we catch, they didn't even know they were in Capel. They, we'd ask them, do you know where you're at? And they'd say some other city. You know, we had one the other day. You know, the ladies were like, well, we left our purses there because we just didn't think we'd be that long. These criminals are fast. I mean, lightning fast. Catalytic converter, less than 30 seconds, and they're gone, you know? And we have a plan for that one. But it takes a community, right? It takes everybody. Now, it does take, to have a safe community, it takes three things. And you have to have strong public safety. And I know I'm biased here, but I think we have very strong public safety. We have the, we have all the resources we need. We've got enough police officers. And we've got great police officers, and they're well-trained. It also takes a strong economic engine to have a safe community. That's not in my wheelhouse. That's you guys' job, right? But that is important, and it does contribute to the safety of the community. And a lot of people don't think about these things. And the third one that I know no way thinks about is, you have to have places of spirituality. You have to have nice parks. You have to have good libraries. You have to have places for the arts, good schools. And then last, I think this is just as important as any of those, you've got to have community engagement and volunteer programs that bring the diversity of the city together. And we have that with Allies in Community and all the other programs that we, that we participate in in this community. Those things are absolutely 100% valuable to our safe community. And I don't say that just because I love this community. I say it because that is a fact. And we can't lose sight of that. It is an all-encompassing thing to keep a community safe. It takes a strong economic engine. It takes good streets. It takes great parks. It takes walking trails. You know, all these things help make our community safe. And I know some people are at home thinking, what? Has this guy lost it? I haven't lost it. I know this. I've been doing this a long time. And I've, I've done this job in another city. And we didn't have those things, and we had ridiculous crime rates. And so, I appreciate everything that this community does. We have tremendous support from our community. I could not be more proud of all the, shoot, we'll go back to COVID, the, just the outpouring of, it wasn't just PPE that they were sending to the PD. They were, and NFD, they were sending cards. They were sending letters. They were just letting us know, hey, we know you guys are out there, and we just want you to know we support you. And all that mattered. And during the snow event, same thing. We just had overwhelming support from the community. We know this community supports itself. We know this community is engaged in its safety. And I will tell you, when you're a police officer in today's world, it don't get any better than that. Because my colleagues in other cities, they're struggling. And, and I'm here tonight because I want to make Capel better. I want to get it, you know, we can make it safer. It's safe, but we can make it safer, and we can make it better for everybody. But we got to keep our eye on the ball, that it's, it's, it's not just the police. It's everything that the city does as a whole. And with that, I will take questions.
Thank you, Chief. Pressure's off now. So, we first heard, or I first heard, I don't think it was your first time to promote the, the community center policing that you're talking about. But back in May, there were several of us that attended a town hall with the Asian community, and you knocked it out of the park that night. So, thanks for your, for your thoughtful comments. And I think I'd do well to continue the message and make sure that all of our residents get that. Council, any questions or comments for the chief? Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I do appreciate it. I didn't have the opportunity to speak to you over the phone, and you took the time to speak to me about the stats and other things that involve in the city. Thank you for taking the time to speak to me about that. Mayor just mentioned about the meeting with the town hall and Asian community. And you also mentioned to me over the phone that you may be thinking about doing some kind of engagement with the community, and starting with apartment complexes, and so on and so forth, in the future that you are thinking about as part of your vision going forward. You mentioned a couple of things. I just wanted to say that for the viewing audience online, so the community engagement programs we have, Allies in the Community, Citizens' Police Academy, Citizens on Patrol Program. You mentioned about the Asian Town Hall meeting already, Coffee with the Cops. These are the programs that we are engaging our community for safer neighborhood. And I do support you, the Police Department. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Hina Hossas-Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Martin, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for taking us through the statistics. I think it's always a great reminder for our viewing community, just to, and for all of us, right, to remind ourselves that, you know, even though we live in Capel, things do happen, and that we all need to look out for each other. And I have appreciated the fact that, you know, I see it even on, on social media, or people talk about it in conversations, where, you know, one, the police are quick to respond. Two, they're quick to find whoever has committed, whatever the crime may be, because, again, everyone is coming together, but we, we can't let our guards down. And, and things like just locking, you know, our vehicles could help even decrease the statistics so much more. So, all that to say, thank you to you and all the officers on your team, and, and thank you for what you do to keep us safe each and every day, and really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate your time tonight.
All right. Thank you all.
Number eight is our Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda. This is routine in nature and generally enacted in a single motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions have, are available on the screen and are rolling through. Counsel, is there any desire to pull any item or discuss it separately? Right? In that case, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the Consent Agenda, item number eight through I.
Councilmember Neves?
Second.
That's been seconded. All in favor, say, raise your, or, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Malen, Hina Hossas-Smith, Carol, Neves, John, Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
motion carries.
Item number nine is a is a public hearing. I opened the the public hearing and asked Mary Boswell to read the item into the record, please.
Yes, sir. Item number nine, public hearing, consider approval of a zoning change request from PD 250 R eight dash H to PD 250 R twenty-five dash H to approve a detailed site plan for a 7,631 square foot, two-story mixed-use building with retail on the first floor and residential on the second floor on zero-point-one-nine-six acres of property located at 755 West Main Street. So, good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Mary Peron Boswell. I'm the senior planner. The item before you this evening is the property located at 755 West Main Street in the Old Town area. The city currently owns this vacant property, and is proposed to sell it to the applicant who owns the existing Let It Shine Boutique, also located in Old Town, just up and around the corner from this property. A very brief history of the general area. In January 2007, approximately seventeen acres of what was known as the Carter Crowley tract was rezoned to historic, and the future land use plan was amended to allow for a continuation of the targeted uses outlined in the old Capel master plan, which included retail offices, restaurants, and similar type uses. Since that time, the area has been platted, streets constructed, new housing, offices, businesses, and restaurants as well. A farmer's market occupies the portion of the open space across the street from this site. The city has constructed an art center just down the street from this site as well. And directly north, there is an office, and directly south of this lot is a vacant, another vacant lot. So the request before you this evening is to approve a detailed site plan for 7,631 square foot, two-story mixed-use building with retail on the first floor, residential on this, and residential on the second floor. The owners of the existing store, Let It Shine Boutique, are proposing to construct this building, live upstairs, and operate a business on the first floor. The first floor is proposed to contain retail space, which opens up to a front porch which faces West Main Street. Also on the first floor, at the rear of the property, are two garage spaces, the fire riser room, and entry to the residence on the second floor. The second floor is proposed to is proposed to contain a 3,300 square foot residence. There are three bedrooms, three bathrooms proposed, and there are three doors that open out onto a balconies facing Main Street. There will be five new on-street parking spaces to the rear of the property, plus a driveway leading to the garage areas. There will also be a sidewalk extended along the street frontage on West Main Street. So this will be an entirely brick building. So the main color of this will be an off-white called Acme Glacier White, with the headers provided in a contrasting accent color of Acme Dove Gray, Dove Gray, excuse me. There is some intricate brickwork banding proposed along the midpoint of the building, extending all around the building. This banding separates the retail from the residential, so the first floor from the second floor. The banding is also found along the top parapet portion of the building. The second-floor residence will have a balcony area that extends along the front of the building over the ground floor porch area. Each of the three residential doors to the balcony will have a standing seam metal awning over it, matching the railings. Wall sconces will provide some light to the balcony, porch, garages, and side entrance. The front elevation of the ground floor will have storefront windows. In terms of landscaping, the plant materials will match those used throughout Old Town. On the north side of the property, Bermuda grass and a mix of shrubs and perennials will be planted. On the east side, along the street in front of the parking area, there will be three landscape islands containing Savannah Holly trees and Liropee ground Continuing the landscaping and trees already provided along Main Street. Along the south of the property, additional trees, grass, and perennials are proposed. So we did send out, we sent out nineteen notices to surrounding property owners within two-hundred feet, as required by straight state law, and another hundred-and-thirty-seven notices to people within eight-hundred feet. We received no written responses, either in favor or opposition to this proposal. We did receive three phone calls asking what was proposed to be built there. So the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of PD 250 R twenty-five dash H, Lot 3R Block D of 755 West Main Street, subject to the following conditions. One, that detailed engineering review take place with the engineering permit submittal. Two, that the Director of Community Development shall have the authority to administratively approve a proposed signage for this development in accordance with Plan Development Regulations PD 250 R eight dash H in the historic district. Three, that the second-floor residence shall be developed in accordance with local ordinances and building codes, and shall be used for residential purposes only. That is the end of my presentation. The applicant is here as well, if you have any questions.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Boswell. Does the applicant have any comments or anything to
I'm Bill Peck. I'm the architect of record on the building, and we're mainly just here to answer any questions you guys might have. Mary's done an amazing job of setting it up for us. So I don't think there's anything left out.
All right. Thank you very much. So on to the next little subitem. Just, Mr. Peck, just stay here a second, because you signed up to speak for the public hearing, and I think you meant to to speak as a applicant. So this is a public hearing. Did you already say your piece and and?
I have said my piece, sir.
Are there any other signatures for the public hearing? All right. So we'll go to the comments by counsel. Thank you, sir. Counsel? Counsel member John?
Thank you, Mayor. If I remember correctly, the second floor, there is a possibility of converting that in the future for a retail space, if it was if it was necessary. Was was, am I recollecting that correctly?
So our conversation with them did not go into that amount of detail. I did, we did have a conversation later today regarding that. I will let them answer that question, but from staff's perspective, it was always the intent for it to be residential.
I saw that. Counsel, any other comments or questions? With none, I'll entertain a motion. Mayor Pro Tim Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to close the public hearing and make a motion to approve item number nine.
By counsel member Matthew, all in favor?
Mayor, sorry, I can't run as fast as I used to.
I'm sorry. Mayor Pro Tim Hill, would you like to restate your motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number nine with conditions.
And a second by counsel member Matthew. Thank you, Mr. Hager. All in favor?
Long, Hina Hossa Smith, Carol, Neves, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. So item number ten is appointment of the mayor pro Tim is required by section three-point-oh-five of the Home Rule Charter. I went back and had to look up our Home Rule Charter, but it says exactly that, that we get to after the first regularly city council meeting following election or runoff, which we had, we shall elect a mayor pro Tim. So it is up to the council to select the mayor pro Tim. So I shall entertain a motion. Counsel member Long?
Thank you, Mayor. Having sit next to this individual for the past seven years, I, yes, wow, is correct. I've gotten to to know Brianna fairly well. I think of all the applicants, which are all of us, that Brianna probably rises to the level of what we would consider as a outstanding mayor pro Tim. So consequently, I move that we select Brianna Hina Hossa Smith as the mayor pro Tim.
Thank you, member. Counsel member Long, do I have a second? Counsel member John, before we vote, I would like to take the moment to thank outgoing Mayor Pro Tim Hill for his long-tenured service.
Yeah, yeah.
Circumstances beyond his control or ours, he got to spend an additional year in service. So, Mark, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. All in favor?
Long, Hina Hossa Smith, Carol, Neves, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number eleven is the City Manager Report. Mr. Lan?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening, I want to go over just several projects that are in progress. You heard earlier tonight, Beltline Reconstruction is out for bids. Expect the presenting of the award sometime on the August tenth council meeting. Airline should be finished up with all westbound street paving this week. Then we begin on the driveways. Sidewalk construction and landscaping is expected to continue on, and traffic should be fully open in about six weeks. Sewer line installation continues on plantation in Mossy Oaks. And regarding Cambria Y's, utility work is complete. Line stabilization and subgrade begins this week, and paving to occur over the next few weeks. The Denton Cray, Denton Creek grade control structure, just for reference point, that's basically near the bridge at Denton Tap and the creek. The tree clearing is ongoing. We're waiting on the lake release from Grapevine Lake to subdue so that work can start. Recording, we are coordinating with the Corps of Engineers on the lake releases, meaning they're telling us when they're doing the releases, and we'll coordinate our work accordingly. Stream G6, that is clearing and grading, is almost complete. The soil nail installation is in progress. And the intersection improvement project, you've continued to see that along Denton Tap. The left turn lane at Southwestern is about ninety percent complete. Signal work is ongoing at that location. Will be finished after, will be finished soon. The eastbound right turn lane at Parkway is in progress, with the first concrete pour scheduled for tomorrow. Other turn lanes are being graded. Signal work continues. We are meeting with, we met with, excuse me, with Tech Dot last week to get the, start the approval process of the right turn lane at S one-twenty-one in Denton Tap. The plan is still to include that intersection as part of this project, and we'll come forward with that change when it's necessary. But we are making progress there. So, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Item number twelve is Mayor and Council Reports. Please join us for free live music outside at The Grove at the Art Center. The Rich Girls will be performing on July seventeenth from ten PM to, or from eight PM to ten PM. Enjoy the music, mingle with friends, and purchase food and beverages from Macklin's. This is a free outdoor concert. Seating will be first come, first served, and lawn chairs are welcomed. For more information, visit the Art Center's website. Then, an invitation to everyone for the month of July is is our budget month. We began last week with our discussion on our charitable organizations, and we will continue next Tuesday, July twentieth, at six PM, while we will be discussing the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and the Special Revenue Fund. This will be held here at Town Center on the second-floor conference room. Then on Thursday, July twenty-second, also at six PM, we will be discussing the General Fund and Debt Service Budget for fiscal year 2022. This is also can be found at the Capel website. Does anyone else have anything to add to the council reports? All right. Here. Counsel member Long?
Yes, thank you. On, at eight o'clock on Saturday evening, there will be a performance at the main hall of the Art Center. And this is being, I guess, more or less sponsored by The Black Box, by Pete, his group. The the name of the, my, the the name of the presentation, it's a one-man event, is Ayman. And there's something that follows that. But anyway, it basically, it's the, I guess it's the life and times of Ayman Carter. And so, and as you know, our football teams have played many a game in Ayman Carter Stadium at TCU. So now we'll know a little bit more about that individual, and what, in fact, he did to deserve being, having a stadium named after him. But anyway, he was, he was in the publishing business, owned a newspaper, owned a radio station, owned a, later on, maybe a TV station as well. So he was, he was active in that, in, obviously, in the city of Fort Worth for a number of years. So that is at eight o'clock on Saturday, this Saturday. It's not free.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I do have one other item to add. As a part of the city's neighborhood engagement efforts, that we will be conducting a new Yard of the Month program. Winners will be selected each month during the months of April through September. Registration is free, and up to six winners will be selected each month. More information may be obtained on the Community Development website. Item number thirteen, Public Service Announcement, concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Anybody have a public service announcement? Seeing none, we will move on to item number fourteen, Necessary Action from the Executive Session. Since we did not have an executive session, there is no action. And we are on to item number fifteen, There Being No Further Business Before This Council. We are adjourned at eight-twenty-two PM.